I'm going to call the council to order. Is there a roll call, please?
The record will reflect that all council members are present.
Mr. City Attorney, do you have any announcements relative to closed session?
We'll probably need to take public comment first, but...
Okay. Public comment on closed session items is now provided. Please come to the deus.
Thank you, Mayor Currie and members of the council. My name is Jim Mosher. As you know, this Friday, the Board of the South Coast Air Quality Management District is going to be voting on a proposed new rule affecting the beach fire rings. And in preparation for that meeting, I watched the online videos of a couple of their prior meetings, and I was surprised to see that before the AQMD goes into closed session, their attorney reads to the public in detail the complete closed-session topic listings printed in the agenda. But I am thankful for even a summary description of what you're going to discuss and an opportunity to comment on it. According to this printed agenda, your first topic of discussion involves anticipated litigation regarding a bayfront property just east of the ferry landing on Balboa Island. And the reason I wanted to comment on this is because what seems to be the same permit application was before the Harbor Commission on their agenda in March, but it was pulled at the last minute with an expectation that it would be coming back to the Harbor Commission at a later meeting, which has not yet happened. Although the present agenda announcement suggests that the Harbor Resources Manager denied the permit transfer, that was not the understanding in the report that was submitted to the Harbor Commission in March. I can't tell from the agenda whether the city is planning to sue someone or expecting to be sued, and as usual, other than providing you with an opportunity to have dinner together, I'm not sure why the matter needs to be discussed behind closed doors. But I would like to suggest that recourse to litigation seems inappropriate before the Harbor Commission has made a decision on this and the matter has run its full administrative course. I hope whoever is discussing this with you will clarify that. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no other public comment...
We'll be meeting in closed session this evening to discuss anticipated litigation related to 508 South Bayfront Avenue and the denial of a commercial permit transfer application for that property, as well as conference of labor negotiators.
Thank you. We are adjourned into closed session. We're... Good evening, everybody. I'm going to call the meeting to order. A roll call, please.
The record will reflect that all members of council are present.
Mr. City Attorney, is there a closed session report?
Thank you, Mayor Currie. There's no closed session report this evening.
Thank you. I'd like to invite the audience to stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led by Councilman Ed Selich, and please remain standing for the invocation that will be led by Melinda Blackman of the Harbor Christian Church.
Follow me in the pledge to our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please join me in silent reflection. We gather here tonight with many issues and agendas on our hearts and minds. Help us to be mindful and respectful of our neighbors' concerns. May we realize that we are all here for a common purpose: to enrich our community. We are thankful for the dedication of our community's leaders and its residents, and know if any issues arise of contention that they will be resolved smoothly tonight. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Please be seated. We're going to begin tonight's meeting with a presentation. One of the things that makes Newport Beach a very special community, let me invite Jan Oates, President of the Friends of Newport Beach Public Library, to come forward, along with Cynthia Cowell, our librarian.
Mayor and council, good evening. I'm Cynthia Cowell, the Director of the library. Go ahead. Show off. You deserve it. This is Jan Oates, President of the Friends of the Library, and as you can see, she has a $255,000 check. That's a cool quarter of a million bucks. $1 at a time, I might add.
Sometimes only 50 cents.
There you go. The greatest bargain in town. But nonetheless, it's a great thing to be able to thank the Friends for this very, very generous gift and their support for our children's summer reading program, a lot of our book and materials purchases, and the list goes on and on and on. But the point is that they are steadfast. It takes a lot to get that much money, so there you go, Jan.
Thank you very much. I am so pleased to present this check on behalf of our 130 very hard-working volunteers who work tirelessly to price-sell these books, and to the community of Newport Beach who donate such wonderful books that were the best-kept secret, probably in Orange County, and we're hoping to even improve on that. With that, I'd like to present this, and thank you very much.
With the new cameras on your phone, you can just take the photo and send it right to deposit. Okay. Notice to the public.
The city provides a yellow sign-in card to assist in the preparation of the minutes. The completion of the card is not required in order to address the city council. If the optional sign-in card has been completed, it should be placed in the box provided at the podium. The City Council of Newport Beach welcomes and encourages community participation. Public comments are generally limited to three minutes per person to allow everyone to speak. Written comments are encouraged as well. The city council has a discretion to extend or shorten the time limit on agenda or non-agenda items. As a courtesy, please turn cell phones off or set them in the silent mode. Now is the time for city council announcements or matters which council members would like placed on a future agenda.
Thank you. Councilmember Daigle.
Yes, I was fortunate to be able to go on a summer vacation, and on June 29th, I was at historic Fenway Park in Boston, and their pre-game show showed the strength of community. They're recognizing the contributions of the Pan Mass Challenge, or PMC, and the work of the Dana Faber Cancer Institute. Boston has some of the finest universities and medical facilities, and cancer patients who are very sick go to Dana Faber for chemo. And it was really touching to see 12 kids bicycle on to the field, and they're all kids who survived cancer and who are on their way to ride across Massachusetts and part of raising $38 million for cancer research. And it was just really touching to see these kids ride out to the Green Monster, where so many batters have been denied home runs. But they weren't denied the chance to live and to ride their bicycles. And of course, the research that's being done on cancer benefits all of us around the country. And then secondly, it's great to see local communities making improvements. And recently, a resident contacted me with a list of issues that they were having in Bayview Park, felt the maintenance could be better, and then he sent me photographs to show the issues. This particular park is located up in San Ana Heights, and so I really appreciate our Recreation Director, Laura Detweiler, being so responsive to these concerns, and really in not much time, together with our Municipal Services Crew, they put in a new concrete pad and picnic table. They recoded the brown-damaged siding that was exposed and peeling off. They sanded the graffiti off the slide, and they inspected all of the equipment. So I really appreciate them doing that. It is a park that's well-used in the community, and looks like we have a picture of it, too. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hinn.
Not so much an announcement, Mr. Mayor, as a, once again, a note of thanks to our Police Department, to Parks and Recreation, to the citizens in the community of West Newport. We completed another Fourth of July in West Newport, and I know we're going to get a more detailed report at the point we're able to tote things up a little better, but all the reports that I've received have been very favorable, that we had another improved experience on the Peninsula with our long-term strategy here to really make it a family-friendly holiday, even on the Peninsula. And so I just can't be more pleased about it. I did participate in the dunk tank, I think along with the city manager and who else? Oh, former council member Steve Rosansky. We probably got dunked a total of 30 or 40 times by good-throwing arms from a very short distance away from the target. And so it was all a great amount of fun, and my thanks again to the city staff for really making this happen.
Thank you. Mr. Selich.
Next Tuesday, the 16th of July, will be the initial meeting of the Land Use Amendment Committee. It's going to be at 3:30 in the Corona Del Mar Conference Room. That's on the first floor, Bay E. And it's really going to be an organizational meeting for the committee, going to be discussing the objectives of the Land Use Amendment, go over the work program and the project schedule, discussion of the project scope. And it will be the initial kickoff meeting. We're going to be meeting twice a month initially till we get the project kicked off, and then go into a once-a-month meeting mode. So that's next Tuesday, the 16th, at 3:30 in the Corona Del Mar Conference Room.
Thank you. Councilmember Gardner.
I blew my last appeal, so I'm going to do it here, so the appropriate staff person will contact me, and I won't blow this one. A tree, the Parks, Beaches and Recreation Commission okayed the removal of a tree on Poppy in Corona Del Mar, and I think this sets a precedent, and I'd like us to look at it. So whoever handles those things, I'm on record now. As for agenda items, we had some picketing going on in the neighborhood, and I know that certain cities have been able to enact some ordinances that help protect neighborhoods. This has nothing to do with the issues. This has to do with the quiet use of your enjoyment of your neighborhood, so I'd like something like that to come back to see if the council would like to address it in more detail. Secondly, with the opening of Civic Center, I've gotten a number of comments from nonprofits who probably were misunderstanding, but they're very disappointed. They thought there was going to be a really bargain place to meet. And so I'd like us, again, put this on the agenda, see if the council would like to look at perhaps a better rate for local nonprofits using our rooms. And then finally, just a clarification. We got a very detailed comment from Mr. Jim Mosher about our bid process at our last meeting, and he felt that we did not do the correct noticing to the bid members, so would somebody on staff like to comment on that just briefly?
Yes, we took a look at that, and everything was done in accordance of law. It was published in the newspaper as required by the government code, and so there was no violations of any of the procedures there.
Thank you.
Mr. Petrus.
I have no report, Mr. Mayor.
Mayor Pro Tim Hill.
I would just like to acknowledge that my wife and I had the great pleasure, July 4th, of participating in three parades in town. The Balboa Parade in the morning, which was a tremendous success, the Mariners Mile Parade, which was its 34th year...
Forty-first.
Say it again.
Forty-first.
Forty-first year, which was very exciting. And then the American Legion Boat Parade, where we got to ride on the lead boat, which was occupied by probably close to 20 active service individuals, and with a live feed broadcast from Afghanistan being broadcast from widescreen televisions along the side, as well as a camera that was picking up the tour as we went around, sending that back to the troops. It was a very exciting and very rewarding day, and I think Newport knows how to celebrate July 4th the right way.
Thank you. The Association of California Cities of Orange County had its annual Golden Hub of Innovation Awards, and Newport Beach came away one of the big winners. We received the Public Works and Infrastructure Award for our harbor dredging project. What's important to know here is because of the way we were able to work together with the Port of Long Beach and coordinate taking out hazardous dredge material and being able to take it to the Port of Long Beach where they needed it for the new piers, it could be put back in the water. Had we not had that opportunity, we would have had to take it out of the water. It would have added another $10 million, doubled the cost of the dredging project, and we were recognized for our innovation in putting that deal together with Long Beach. Then I was personally gratified that we received the Planning and Community Development Award for our arts funding initiative, where we have agreed to take a portion, not new taxes, but of the existing fees that we receive from development through our development fees, and dedicate that to public art. And we were recognized for the improvements that that will make to Newport Beach as well. And then finally, we received an honorable mention award for our IT department. And let me just share with you some statistics you may not know about this new city hall. Because of the technological capacity of this building and because of the initiatives of our city manager, when we moved here, in addition to not bringing a lot of the paper that we had over there, we have gone as much as possible to a paperless approach. We have reduced the number of printers in the new city hall from 94 to 22, a reduction of 72 printers. That by itself saves $25,000 a year in maintenance costs just for the printers themselves. We print 22,000 pages less per month now than we were printing in 2009. I think that is a remarkable achievement, and it goes to the leadership of our department heads and certainly to the city manager in making these changes, and I appreciate the association recognizing that. A couple of other announcements. Oasis will hold a Senior Resources Expo on Saturday, July 20th, from 9:00 to 12:00. Seniors, their families, and anyone interested in senior-oriented products and services are invited to attend this free event. And starting at 12:00 PM, the Taste of Oasis will offer lunch items provided by six local retirement communities. Lunch tickets are on sale for $3 each. For more information, you can call 949-644-3244. On Monday, I was joined by the Mayor Pro Tim and was pleased to speak at the opening of the Courage to Remember exhibit in our library that really talks about the reasons for the development of the Holocaust and of the rise of Nazism, and really provides a very sobering reminder of all of us, of the despotism that existed in the world then and could exist in the future, if we are not all diligent about that. I strongly encourage you to go. It will be in our library on the second floor until July 28th. It's a very, very powerful exhibit. Jack Perisner, who was a survivor of the Holocaust, spoke yesterday, and his words were tremendously moving, and it was just wonderful to hear his heroic story. With that, we're now go to public comment.
Mr. Mayor, before we start, we've got a lot of people standing. I wonder if maybe you could raise your hands, and if you've got a vacant seat next to you just in case somebody wants to sit. There's still quite a few seats if you want to come down.
Please help accommodate your neighbors there. Thank you.
Public comments are invited on Consent Calendar, Items 1 through 12. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record. To the extent that any item is removed from the consent calendar by a council member, members of the public are invited to speak on each item for up to three minutes per item. All matters listed under Consent Calendar are considered to be routine and will all be enacted by one motion in the form listed below. The city council has received detailed staff reports on each of the items recommending an action. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time the city council votes on the motion unless members of the city council request specific items to be discussed and are removed from the consent calendar for separate action.
Thank you. Any items to be removed from the consent calendar? Councilmember Gardner.
5 and 9.
Okay. Mr. Petrus.
None.
Mr. Hill?
None.
Councilmember Daigle.
None to remove, but I did want to comment that we are in the process of wrapping up the lower bay dredging, and as part of that, we're testing the water quality and the sediment, so something to make sure that things went well. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hinn.
Yes, item number one, and also a comment on item number seven, to the extent that we are, I'm hoping that we're going to be vigilant about timely advance approval of items like this in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Selich.
I have none.
And I have none. So I'm going to open this up to public comment. Items 1, 5, and 9 have been pulled. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on a matter on the consent calendar that has not been pulled? Please come forward.
Mayor Currie and members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. First, I would like to say that I was very pleasantly surprised this afternoon to discover that the written comments I submitted yesterday regarding this meeting had been added under public comments on the consent calendar to the online version of the agenda for tonight's meeting, as well as public correspondence received regarding the city hall reuse proposals. I wish to sincerely thank the city clerk for taking the initiative to do this, and I'm also glad that copies of the written comments received after the Monday cutoff are still available in the lobby. If you are going to ask the public to submit written comments on the day before the meeting, as you have been doing since January, and limit live public comment on the consent calendar at the meeting, as you have done since January, it seems only fair that those comments be posted in a place where not only you, but the public in general, has a chance to review them before the meeting. And I hope this will encourage others to submit written comments on the day before the meeting. Regarding this consent calendar, if you read those comments, regarding items 3 and 4, you will know I am concerned about creating a point of positions with the intention that only one specific applicant will be seriously considered. And just as importantly, I think that the state law prohibits you from both creating and filling a committee position in a single night. The state law clearly requires noticing of the opening and a 10-day waiting period following that to provide everybody in the community who might be qualified an opportunity to apply. The staff reports for items 10 and 11 regarding private encroachments in residential parkways are also unclear as to whether any notice was provided to the neighbors regarding what you were being asked to approve here tonight. In this case, notice is apparently not required by law, but it would seem as a matter of courtesy that the neighbors should know that the items are on tonight's consent calendar. Finally, I find item 8, the new agreement with the Friends of Oasis, difficult to understand. The staff report says that we need to redefine and clarify the relationship between the SETI and the Friends of Oasis, but the exhibit that defines the relationship does not seem to have been changed in any way. And as with our agreements with other outside nonprofits, such as Visit Newport Beach, I would have hoped to see clauses in this agreement ensuring that the meetings of this outside private organization would be as open, as well-noticed, and as participatory as our own meetings. But I fail to see any such promises in the new agreement. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mosher. Are there any other public comments on matters on the consent calendar not pulled? All right, seeing none, I'll bring it back. Is there a motion, please?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Petrus.
Move to approve the consent calendar.
With the exception of...
Of 1, 5, and 9.
Okay, motion. Please vote.
I don't have a voting screen.
The vote screen.
My screen is rather insulting.
The motion carries unanimously 7-0.
Thank you. Item 1, Mr. Hinn.
Yes, these are the minutes from the last meeting, and for item number 21, I'd like to correct the record. I believe I misspoke in discussing my views of the city insurance renewals. I'm pretty sure that's the first time in my seven years in council that I've misspoken about something, but nevertheless, I would like to correct the record. And that is, as I was commenting on which of the options to be that I felt was the best one, in light of the information that the dam would be included in the coverage, I was in favor of option 2, not as option 1, as apparently it came through on the video. So with that change, I would move approval of the minutes.
Motion, if you're second.
Second.
Is there any public discussion on this matter? All right, seeing none, I'll bring it back. Please vote.
The motion carries unanimously 7-0.
Thank you. On item 5, I have a stockholder interest in one of the firms that consults to this program, so I'm going to recuse myself and turn over the chair to the Mayor Pro Tim.
It is. This is about clean energy, something I'm very much in favor of, but I have, I need some clarification here. On the second page of the report, it says, "The program is available at no cost to the city of Newport Beach." In other words, the individuals involved will pay for it. However, if you go to the original agreement on page 11, 31 handwritten, it says, "In preparing the budget, the General Assembly," which is made up of the cities that are part of this, "will determine the amount of funds which will be required for members for the purpose of this agreement," which suggests some contribution. And then it says back on page 15, "Withdrawal shall not relieve the party of its proportionate share of any debts or other liabilities." So this does not apply to us, I guess, but could you clarify it for me?
Thank you, Councilmember Gardner. Our chief building official, Simone Georgis, has been involved in the preparation of the staff report, and I'll let him answer this question.
Thank you.
Good evening, Councilmember Gardner. There's no fee to the city to administer the program, but with regards to the WR cog, we are just an associate member, so my understanding at this point is that we don't pay into the program at all.
And is that what our attorneys agree with?
Yes, that's a correct interpretation.
Okay, so as we're not a full member, we're not part of the debt. Thank you very much.
Correct.
All right, then I move to approve.
Any public comments on this item? Please come forward. Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the council.
I'll second.
All right. Please vote.
With Mayor Currie recusing himself, the motion carries 6-0.
Thank you. We'll go on to item number 9. Councilwoman Gardner.
Yes, this is an approval of an amendment to our tree maintenance service, and I just wondered if there's anything in our contract that talks about what the arborists should do in between trees. We've lost trees, and they're in jeopardy, for example, on Marguerite Avenue, Corona Del Mar, because a tree was diseased, they pruned it, moved on to the next tree, next tree, and carried on the disease. We've got this new problem with a new fungus and everything, so do we make any requirements about cleaning equipment and that sort of thing?
We don't. As far as I know, we don't make any requirements as far as cleaning equipment or replacing equipment, though there's very strict requirements on, when they trim the trees, on doing a full health analysis of the tree. And we'll make decisions right then. If it is diseased, and that disease is something that could spread to other trees, we'll make a decision to remove the tree.
But then do they clean the blades? Because otherwise, they're just chopping it, bringing it to the next tree.
No, I understand your question. I don't know of any requirement... I don't, I don't know of any requirement that between trimming each of the trees, they do dozens a day, that they stop and clean the equipment. We certainly could add that.
Well, I certainly think at least we should tell them that if you see a diseased tree, I mean, it's common sense, but they're in a hurry a lot of times. I mean, they've got a lot of work to do.
Oh, they do.
And, and to say, particularly if it's a diseased tree, to clean those blades before they move on to the next one.
Maybe carry those little white things or something.
Yeah. All right, thank you.
Mark, before you leave, just have one other comment on this item, and that is that this contract is grown to be fairly substantial in size. And I'm fine with the, with this amendment, but when it comes up again at its expiry, will this be subject to a competitive bidding procedure?
Absolutely. In fact, I think the report might touch on that. This current contract expires in December. We are preparing right now the RFP to send out, and it'll be a full competitive process. So you'll see that again.
Thank you. Is there any member of the public that would like to speak on this matter? Please come forward.
Mayor Curry and members of the council, my name again is Jim Mosher. As Councilman Hen observed, this is a very large contract, and it does involve trees. And as I said in my written comments, I would just think at some point, it would be appropriate for this to be scrutinized, our tree trimming program in general, by the Parks, Beaches, and Recreation Commission. We, people have created that commission, you have made appointments to it, and their purpose is to oversee and advise you on matters related to trees. It seems a very appropriate topic for them to consider at some time for more thorough public discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the council. Is there a motion?
Move the item.
Second?
I'll second it.
Seeing no further discussion, please vote.
Motion carries unanimously, seven zero.
Thank you. We'll now go to public comments on non-agenda items.
Public comments are invited on non-agenda items generally considered to be within the subject matter jurisdiction of the City Council. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record.
Anyone who'd like to speak on a matter not on the agenda, please come forward.
All right, I beat ya. Good evening. My name's Janelle Goges. I'm the local public affairs region manager for Southern California Edison. Many of you, some familiar faces, many of you knew Eddie Marquez, my colleague. Eddie unfortunately has been transferred to other cities. He's still within Orange County, but I have the pleasure of taking on the city of Newport Beach. I grew up in Orange County, used to work in Newport Beach, know the city very well. So I look forward to working with the council, with the city staff, and then also the members of the public. And I've provided the city clerk my contact information, and I look forward to many years to come. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome to Newport Beach.
Thank you.
Janelle, just one comment. We were in the middle of some discussions with Eddie regarding improvement in the reliability on the peninsula, and I'm assuming he's briefed you well on that, and you'll be carrying forward with that.
Yes, he has.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome.
Next speaker, please.
Thank you, Mayor Curry and members of the council. My name is Jim Mosher. As Councilwoman Gardner kindly noted a little bit earlier, in the written comments I submitted, I expressed some concern at the, about what took place at the last meeting regarding the renewal of the levies on the owners subject to the two surviving business improvement districts that we have. As one whose involvement in the city government arose from a feeling of having been denied my due process in a matter that you're aware of, although I am not a bid member, I feel the bid members were denied their due process. And however, the city attorney feels the law should be interpreted or could be interpreted. As Councilwoman Gardner pointed out at that last meeting, the counting of the number of protests that you receive seems a very futile exercise if those who have the right to protest have not been informed that they have that right. So I really hope that you would reconsider how you do that next year. The other thing I might hope that you would reconsider is the direction you gave staff to remove the beach fire rings. I think it's giving our city a very bad name. No one doubts that fire rings produce smoke, but so do fireplaces. In my opinion, and based on what I've seen, what makes the fire rings a nuisance on the rare occasions when the smoke actually does intrude into the homes of the nearby residents is a pathetic lack on our part of public outreach and enforcement. We complain that visitors are not using the fire rings properly, but as best I can tell, we no longer make the slightest effort to inform even those who can read English how we think the fire rings should be used, and the need, if the amenity is to be preserved, to be respectful to the neighbors. Nor I think have we made any effort to inform our own complaining residents that we have and have long had provisions in our municipal code giving the fire department the authority to halt the burning whenever the smoke they are complaining about is actually creating a nuisance. Presumably, all they had to do was call. But instead of accepting our responsibility as good and responsible stewards of the public tidelands, we seem to be actually hoping for bad behavior so that an outside agency, seeing our self-imposed helplessness, will adopt new regulations prohibiting a use that we could have managed ourselves. The AQMD will be hearing this matter on Friday, and I don't think it will be a proud day for our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Other public comments? Please come forward.
Good evening, Robert Hawkins. I recently purchased a plug-in vehicle, and it is now charging at the charging stations up above, the ChargePoint charging stations. And I'm familiar with ChargePoint, and I am prepared to pay the appropriate amount for the charge. But it turns out to city charging stations, there is no charge. Now, I know that this council has been very, very active in making sure that there are no gifts of public funds to anybody. But if you are giving away a charge to members of the public, that is a gift of public funds. So I'd encourage you to take a look at that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there other public comments? Please come forward. All righty, seeing none, I will close public comment. Thank you. Now we have oral reports from City Council on committee activities. I was waiting to see which way to go. Councilmember Gardner?
Yeah, we had a meeting with a subcommittee of the Harbor Commission and the head of the Parks, Beaches, and Recreation Commission to discuss the lower castaways. The Harbor Commission had a meeting several months ago in which the public contributed a number of really good ideas as to what we can utilize this property for. And the Parks, Beaches, and Recreation Commission will be appointing two members to work with them to prepare a list of suggestions, which will come to the council, I would imagine, in a couple of months. So we are moving along on ideas for that property.
Thank you. Mr. Petros?
Mayor Curry, I would first apologize. I have a very sore throat this evening, so I will try and keep my, I must keep my remarks brief. On July 1st, the Bicycle Master Plan Oversight Committee had a meeting where we were introduced to the consultant who will be in charge of preparation of Newport Beach's first Bicycle Master Plan, Alta Planning and Design. It was a well-attended meeting. The committee was there in full spirit and active in putting together the work plan and the work program. The consultant is now out collecting information, existing data about cycling activity in the community. For those of you out in the public who are watching or are here tonight, if you do have an interest in cycling in our community, or if you happen to be a motorist who has an interest in cycling in our community, we want to hear from you. This is about our community and how to make it better for all to circulate around town. And mobility stretches from those who are behind the wheel or in the saddle. So please take an interest. We look forward to the consultant's report, their first report, when it comes out in October. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Hill?
None, thank you.
Councilmember Deagle?
None, but I did want to add that in addition to free plugins, we also have free Wi-Fi. So if you want to take advantage of that.
Mr. Hen?
Christmas in Newport Beach. I have no, no committee reports.
Mr. Selig?
On the 26th of June, the LCP Implementation Committee met, and we spent most of the meeting looking at the coastal zone boundary in the city and where it's plotted. And there's some discrepancies between where we feel the boundary should be and where the Coastal Commission feels it should be. And so our staff is taking a look at resolving some of those issues. And then there might be some other opportunities as part of our LCP to make further adjustments to the coastal zone boundary, so we discussed those. And then we also discussed some follow-up to the administrative chapters of the implementation plan, and then the incorporation, I should say, of Newport Coast into our overall local coastal plan. Thanks.
Thank you. And I have no items. With the indulgence of the council, I'd like to take item 14 first, because I think most of the audience is here for 13, so we can dispense with this. And that will be helpful to Mr. Hen, who won't have to stay around until the end of the day. Mr. Petros?
Mr. Mayor, I need to recuse myself from item number 14, as I own property within 500 feet of Coast Highway.
Thank you. And you just let Mr., you hit the door there, let Mr. Ridgeway outside know that this item's coming up. I think that's what he's here for. Mr. Petros, I think you brought this up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I see Mr. McCune has just joined us as well, so the timing is perfect. I have had the pleasure of working with a group of property owners and merchants along Mariners Mile to look into opportunities to revitalize that corridor. There have been a number of suggestions. In fact, the most recent city council had formed a citizens advisory panel to look at Mariners Mile that was never really undertaken, given the burden of the other caps in town. So the work of a Mariners Mile cap is still to be done. However, it was brought to my attention by the merchants and the property owners that there are two real issues that they would like to have this council consider. One of those issues is how to revitalize and bring up the economic vitality of the businesses and the properties around Mariners Mile, something that really is the subject of a cap in the general plan land use element that we're going off of now. But a very focused issue for the group is to, as part of that revitalization, to keep the cross-section of Coast Highway as it is today. Coast Highway is planned as a six-lane arterial throughout Newport Beach, with the exception of Corona Del Mar. In Mariners Mile, it is between four and five lanes. What that does is it provides some uncertainty for future development along the corridor. Those are very narrow lots today, and as such, the ultimate property line sits behind the existing curb. And therefore, if you do redevelop along the corridor, your parcel is much, much smaller because of the fact that you would have to dedicate the additional right-of-way for future Coast Highway. To the property owners and the business owners, that is something that really takes a lot of the value out of their property and the incentive to do anything along the corridor so the community gets what it sees out there as it is today. What I would like to see is if this council will entertain the notion of an exploration of considering moving forward with OCTA and Caltrans, and looking at opportunities for us to maintain the existing section of Coast Highway. I had outlined in my presentation at my request at the last time, three key items that I would like, I'm sorry, four key items that I would like to consider, and that's outlined in the staff report. I don't need to bring those up again. With that, I would just offer any opportunities for the council to make comments. I know that there are some of the business owners here who would like to address the council as well.
Councilmember Gardner?
Just a clarification. Number four is existing and future traffic forecasts. Are you, if this is on the agenda, staff would come back with a review of what's been done, or are you suggesting a new traffic study?
No, just what has been done. There are forecasts out there, and they will help lead us to a conclusion, whether or not to widen or to leave it as it is.
Anybody else? All right, seeing none, no other council comments. Are there members of the audience who'd like to speak on this matter? Please come, please come forward.
Mayor Curry and members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. I don't expect you to be shocked by anything that I say, so I hope you won't find it too shocking for me to say that if you're going to be considering steps that behind them may have the purpose of facilitating rebuilding of Mariners Mile, then I think you should also be considering the steps necessary to make the entirety of it a part of the coastal zone. Currently, part of it is in and part of it is out. I found it very surprising when former Mayor Ridgeway's Mariners Point project at the corner of PCH and Dover was allowed to proceed without a coastal development permit, for it is not only at the foot of our coastal bluffs, but is within a few steps, literally, of the historical monument marking the first tidelands development in what years later was to become Newport Beach. Why such an area was not part of the coastal zone, and why the bluffs on which the recused Mayor Protem Hill and others live were not, is beyond me. In researching this, I found that certain areas had been excluded from the original coastal zone in the 1970s, predicated on a promise to the legislature that there was no foreseeable possibility of a change in the kind or the intensity of uses on that land. Well, if we significantly change the structure of Mariners Mile, perhaps leaving the road as it is, but encouraging more building, then I think we have broken that promise, and the whole of it belongs back under the protection of the Coastal Act where it always belonged. Thank you.
Mayor Curry?
Mr. Petros?
I would just offer that I would thoroughly enjoy the opportunity to have a consistent application of coastal zone boundaries and have it completely eliminated from the coastal zone so that we retain local control over Newport Beach issues. Thank you.
I expect the property owners to probably side with you on that one. Other speakers, please come forward.
Members of the council, my name is Ned McCune. Am I coming through?
Ten minutes, Mr. McCune.
Okay. I've been a member of the Mariners Mile Business Association since 1976. And though we are not a formal organization, we are in, we are a continuous organization, and I've been its chairman since 1998. In all that time, there, we've considered many issues, but insofar as we have considered the status of Coast Highway, there has never been a member who felt that the county master plan of arterial highways ought to be fulfilled in Mariners Mile, for the simple reason that the highway would cease to be a local-serving artery and it would become a throughway. Our members feel, just as anyone in Corona Del Mar would feel, about having six lanes run through its district. It seems rather remote that Caltrans can find the money to buy the property and make Mariners Mile six lanes, given their manifest other priorities that they have. If you drive our freeways, you know there's a lot of unmet needs. But nonetheless, for as long as Mariners Mile's Coast Highway status is the way it is on the county plan, the city is obliged to extract from developers setbacks and other exactions that make development difficult. Mariners Mile has the greatest upside potential of any district in the city we are not fully realized, unlike some districts. We could really be something grand. And I hope that the council will use its influence with OCTA to that effect. I know it's not a department of the city. You can't give them orders, but you do have influence, and I hope you will try. Thank you.
Thank you. Other speakers, please come forward.
This is all new. Member of councilmember is Todd Ridgeway, on behalf of the Mariners Mile Business Association. I want to say, first of all, everything that was articulated by Councilman Petros, I agree with. I also agree with everything that Ned McCune just said. There is a diamond in the rough in Mariners Mile, and I encourage that this council endorse some type of study. some type of study. To put a freeway or a six-lane highway through that area, which is business residential above, is really an anachronism in this city. It shouldn't occur. There are a few areas that are six lanes, but Corona Del Mar was reduced. As you know, Laguna Beach was reduced. There is a major highway there. The city of Huntington Beach was successful in removing the 19th Street Bridge from the master plan of arterial highways. That puts a greater impact on us, a greater impact for what? Citizens that don't live here. They're bypass citizens. If there was any one component of that plan that would have relieved the demand on that section of Coast Highway and elsewhere within the city, it was the 19th Street Bridge. So I think there is an opportunity, I did talk to a few of you, to work within the confines of what we have. I will say, years ago, the city did say, "We'll take your 12 feet." That's basically on the corner of Dover and Coast Highway. That's already been done. And we will give you your FAR back. But I want to remind you that that doesn't work, because parking is the issue. I mean, there are a couple of issues along there, but even if you give the FAR back, the only way to park and get your FAR is a structure. As you know, there is a structure going up now. It's a substantial one, and it's within the rules and regulations of this city. At the end of the day, we're less than .50 FAR on our building, but the structure itself is much larger, and we admit to that. I think you should study it. I will say, years ago, when I was in your position, Jan Van der Sloot came to me a number of times. He lived by the high school. He was a firm believer of just redesigning what we have. You could reduce the size of the sidewalk. You could put turn lanes in at the major intersections, but you could maintain basically a four-lane highway but with bypass. So there are ways, but it can't be done here at the podium tonight, but I encourage you to follow Councilman Petros' comments. Let's go ahead and have it studied. As you know, I have met numerous times with Caltrans, Caltrans with love, love, I'm going to say that numerous times, to relinquish the highway.
Thank you, Mr. Petros.
And the city has not been receptive to that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other speakers, please come forward. Okay, seeing none, I'll bring it back to the council. Mr. Petros, going to offer a motion?
I would move that -- I'd move the action that we direct staff to return to the council with an item where we look up matters on Mariners Mile to address the four issues. It also may be instructive to, if the council moves on this, to send out a correspondence to OCTA and just test the waters with them. What's the likelihood or their receptiveness to moving this forward? Because that may tell us right at the outset, and we get our answer. But I would move the recommended action.
Second.
Mr. Hen?
Yeah, I just had one further comment, just to correct the record a little bit. The city has been very receptive to the idea of taking over Coast Highway. We've had a lot of discussions about that, and the problem is, the state won't give us any money, none, for the prospective maintenance of that section of highway, and that's what stopped us from moving forward, even though we've had a lot of discussion. So I'm fine to study this issue, and I think it's worthwhile to study, but I just wanted to make sure people didn't have a misimpression about that.
Thank you. Seeing no further discussion, motions on the table to approve the staff recommendation, please vote. Approved the recommended action.
With Mayor Protam Hill recusing himself, the motion carries 6-0.
Very good. Okay, we'll now move on to the main event, item 13. Is there a staff report?
Yes. Good evening, Mayor Curry, members of council.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor. I do need to note that I will be recusing myself from this discussion. I have a business relationship with a -- actually, an indirect business relationship with a business in Viola Lido Plaza adjacent to the City Hall property, which might give rise to a conflict, and therefore, to absolve any concern over that, I'll be recusing myself.
Thank you. Mr. Hen? Please proceed.
Thank you. Again, I'm Kim Brandt, the Community Development Director, and this agenda item has to do with the reuse of the former City Hall site located at 3300 Newport Boulevard. And I know that we have had several meetings on this topic, and I don't want to give an in-depth staff report. We do have a lot of material that was prepared for the agenda this evening, but I do want to give an overview of where we are tonight. Just in terms of what has happened in the past 10 months, in October of last year, the city issued a request for qualifications, and we received 15 responses to that RFQ. In January of this year, the city council chose six development teams to proceed into the next step, which was to participate in the request for proposal stage. The city issued that RFP at the end of January, and in April, we had three teams respond to the city's RFP. That was RD Olson Development, the Shop-Off Group, and Sonnenblick Development. On April 23rd, we held a study session here in the new chambers, and we had detailed presentations from each one of the development teams, and they went into the various aspects of their concepts for that property. Since April, staff has spent a considerable amount of time reviewing all three of the proposals. We have retained consultants to help us with the various technical aspects of the concepts. We have retained Dennis Stone of Dennis Stone Consulting, Kathy Head, and Tim Brez of Kaiser Marston, as well as Jim Mossbach and Richard Burksen from Economic Planning Systems. So this team has put together the analysis that is contained in your staff report this evening. Just as a brief overview, we do, again, have three responders to the city's RFP. RD Olson, and I'm presenting the information in alphabetical order of the development submittals. RD Olson Development submitted a concept for a 130-room boutique hotel and spa with complimentary retail, restaurant, and meeting space. The Shop-Off Group submitted a residential mixed-use project, which included 99 dwelling units with 15,000 square feet of retail restaurant and a community room. The Sonnenblick development concept consisted of a 148-room boutique hotel and fitness center, as well as complimentary restaurant and meeting space. Here's an overview of the RD Olson project, and I will ask Ben to just give an over -- just to use the pointer to show the public spaces. Each one of these concept proposals includes a significant amount of public plazas and paseos with the intent of helping to engage the public and bringing the public into the overall Lido Village area. This is the Shop-Off Group proposal. Again, it is a 99 apartment unit project, and with the public paseo occurring starting, I think the key point is the plaza there at 32nd Street and Newport Boulevard, and provides public pathways along both of the streets, as well through the interior of the project connecting to the adjacent retail center to the north. And this is the Sonnenblick development proposal. Again, a hotel proposal. There are public paseos adjacent to both Newport Boulevard and 32nd Street, as well as a significant public plaza within the interior of the project, again, intending to provide connections to the adjacent developments in Lido Village. This is an excerpt from the staff report that shows the different statistics associated with each one of the conceptual plans. And here is another excerpt from the staff report that speaks to the economic impacts that are expected from each one of the conceptual plans. The information in this table is what was provided by the proposers. We did have two firms, Kaiser Marston and EPS, evaluate the estimated revenues that have been provided to the city, and their complete copies of their reports are included and appended to the staff report. We've reached the point where the next key step, as we're looking and considering development projects for the former City Hall site, is to select a development team to move forward. At this point, staff is recommending RD Olson. In staff's evaluation of the three proposals, we feel that the hotel proposal versus the apartment proposal does have the ability to generate significant economic activity to the overall area, although not as much as the proposed Sonnenblick estimates. Staff believes that the hotel proposal by RD Olson is best supported by the previous market and economic studies that we had prepared last fall in anticipation of going through this process. Staff also believes that the proposed architectural design of the RD Olson proposal very well complements the existing architecture and theme of Lido Village and Balboa Peninsula, and where we envision that area going as a part of the Lido Village design guidelines. And we also think that this plan does a very good job of engaging the community from the surrounding streets with its public plazas and paseos. But as a general note, we felt that all of the proposals were scored very high in that What we're asking the city council to do this evening is to hear public comments. We do have representatives from each of the development teams this evening, and I know that each one of them would like to make some brief remarks to the city council. And I do believe we have a significant amount of people in our audience this evening who are interested in participating in this agenda item. We are hoping that the city council will move forward and select a development team and start the process of entering into a memorandum of understanding with the ultimate goal of entering into a lease, which is down the road in this process. We are also asking the city council to consider adopting a resolution that would form an ad hoc negotiating committee, which would be composed of two city council members that would assist in the negotiations for the lease and other aspects of the project prior to the ultimate approval by city council. And lastly, but not least, we are asking for further direction from the city council to modify the project description of our pending land use and zoning amendments. We have a very broad description of the proposed changes to those designations, and based on your action this evening, that could be modified to clarify the direction of city Provided above, are the next steps in the process after this evening, the confirmation or that could occur this evening, the mayor's appointment to the committee, the negotiating ad hoc committee? The staff will be working then on preparing the memorandum of understanding with a development team. Updating in our land use and zoning amendments and completing that legislative amendment process. We would also be working on the lease negotiations and refining the development concept into an actual application to the city. Ultimately, any project that's approved for the property at 3300 Newport Boulevard will have to go through the normal application process and public hearings before the planning commission. So with that, we have our entire consultant team here to assist in answering any of the questions that city council may have.
Thank you. Before we hear from the applicants, do we have any questions?
I have a couple of questions. On the Olson project, on the parking, I wasn't sure whether this had -- it sounded like there was going to be more information perhaps, but it said 145 off-street parking and 35 on-street parking. Are those public 35, the on-street public parking places?
Yes, Councilmember Gardner. The RD Olson project is proposing at this point, or concept, includes 144 parking spaces within the site itself. And then they're also counting the parking that's existing currently on 32nd Street, and those would be public spaces. But for -- at such time that we move forward with any development proposal that includes a hotel, we would evaluate the parking needs with the actual precise project.
Okay, that leaves me to my second point. With both -- I'm focusing on the hotels right now, just because it's real easy to do the two in comparison. The Sonnenblick project has 210 parking spaces. They're also projecting 200 employees. The Olson project, 145 plus 35 with 80 employees. Where are we parking our employees then? Because I think those rooms are for the people that are using hotels. Yes? No?
Yes.
I mean, particularly the one, that's a lot of cars coming in, and we can't ask them all. I mean, as much as we'd like, they're not going to be all taking public transport or riding their bikes.
That is correct, and oftentimes with hotel projects, the parking rate is actually lower than you would find with a motel. A lot of hotel guests are -- do not have their own transportation to the facility. I have seen parking rates as low as half a space per room for a hotel project. But again, what we would like to do, and what the zoning code requires, is that we don't not have a specific hotel parking rate in our zoning code, but rather that with an actual development through the use permit process or the site development review process, that parking rate will be established appropriately. And I think when we have a better understanding of what that project will be ultimately, we can look at examples of existing projects that are similar and what their parking needs are and how they handle their parking demand. So we can really have an apples-to-apples comparison. I think at this point, it's a little too conceptual.
I would agree with that, except I don't know that there's an apples-to-apples, because we aren't plunking a new hotel down in the middle of Newport Center with a lot of parking. We are putting it in an area where there isn't any parking. And I know that in Corona Del Mar, the most complaints I get as far as parking is not beach parking, is not even customer parking, it's employee parking. And if we're going to put 200 employees in or 80 new employees in, I think that part of our parking thing has to consider how we handle them. So I'm just putting that out there for the future.
Mr. Petros?
Mayor Curry, it -- first of all, it's a pleasure to be here. After a recent FPPC ruling, I am available to adjudicate this and to render my opinion based on the information that's been put before me, so it's good to see you all. I, too, share a little bit of concern over the parking for the hotel. I have worked on hotels in Pebble Beach, at the Montage. I developed the traffic study and parking for a number of hotels throughout California and Asia, and I know that that parking is a huge issue with these. I was pleased to hear your comments, Ms. Brandt, that we are acting on an MOU leading to a lease. This is not a project approval. We are not here tonight to approve a particular project. We are here tonight to find a dance partner and start the dance, and that dance will lead to a series of negotiations. One of the negotiations that I would like to see clearly articulated in this ad hoc committee is the parking. And if that is part of the restructuring of the revenue stream, our commitment to participation or whatever, that value to the community of not creating a parking impact in the Lido Village far outweighs that economic return for me. So I don't have a question for you or anything, but I would like to make sure that should the council move in that direction, that we do articulate some of the issues for that ad hoc negotiating committee, and it be that maybe there be consideration of additional parking.
Thank you. All right, seeing no further council comments, let me invite the applicants to come forward and make brief comments if they would like to do that. Let's start alphabetically once again with Mr. Olson, if he'd like to come forward.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Actually, maybe I don't have to bend over. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, for allowing us to make our proposal. It was April 23rd that we were here last. We've been on the road in telling the story and our concept, but I would first like to start by saying what an amazing report staff has done. 172 pages. Our whole team has read it and find it as though there's been no stone unturned. So -- but with that, I would just like to start by, this is a slide that we actually created that we've been reaching out to the community with and talking about what the hotel concept is. Balanced, appropriate, realistic, feasible, very important, reasonable, thoughtful, connecting, accessible, neighborly, which is very important in this site. We see this as a neighborhood hotel. We see this as a neighborhood hotel, authentic, authentic to Newport, embracing, local, sophisticated, casual, passionate, nautical, Newport, beachy, coastal, elegant, and really part of our community. That's what we see this hotel being. Next slide, please. So many of you know us, know our company, R.D. Olson Development. We're very active. We have developed, we've invested over $200 million since the downturn, which in today's reality, that says a lot. We're excited about this project in many ways. Our construction company has also built $2 billion in hospitality construction throughout the U.S., very experienced team. I would like to also point out, our Destination Hotels are operating partner, national operator, best-in-class. One of just a small many points about them and the awards that they win, they are second only to Ritz-Carlton in number of spas in the top 20 Condé Nast study throughout the U.S. Their La Berge in Del Mar was recently featured by Fifi Chow, our famous food columnist here about three weeks after our presentation. They've got a great restaurant there. The 1540 is the name of the restaurant. That hotel there represents their community in many ways, much as what we would like to do here in Newport Beach in Lido Village. Feasible. I think that it's from day one, we set out to build a hotel, build a plan that was financially feasible. That's how hotels get done. And from the start, we wanted to focus on something that met the market for the price point. In fact, our price point is a little bit higher than the original development or the original proposal that PKF had done. Part of that is because we think we're bringing a little bit higher quality, but at the same time, I think the hotel business, we know, the hotel business has actually done, has been recovering and still in recovery. But the bottom line is feasibility is what matters. It's what gets developments done and completed. Design, WATG, our architectural firm, they are one of the leading premier hotel architectural firms in the world. They are local people, too. They care about what we develop. They live here with us. Their design is point-on, and I think it fits the history of Newport Beach and what we call Newport Nautical with its roots coming from Cape Cod. Our civil engineering firm, Fusco Engineering, as many of you are very familiar with, has worked on countless environmental-sensitive sites in the coastal region, in particular here in Newport Beach. Pat is also a member of our community as well. Since we started from April 23rd and actually even before then, we've gone out and reached out to the community. And I'm going to just list a few of the folks that we've met with, and if I've left anybody out, please accept my apology now. But Lido Isle Homeowners Association had one of the biggest turnouts that they've ever had at a homeowners association. West Newport Homeowners Association bid the Balboa Improvement District, which included a man, Patrick Moore, who operates the Ferris wheel, who's loaded my family up many times on his Ferris wheel and provided a lot of entertainment to us, another gentleman in support of what we're proposing. Peninsula Point Homeowners Association, we've held public events at Rudy's, Cannery, hey, who won't show up for free beer, Tommy Bahamas. From that, we've received a lot of support from many people, and including the new owners of Lido Village, DJM Capital. They're very excited about what we can potentially bring to the village. Virtually everywhere we've gone, we've received support, and I cannot thank everybody who's showing up and who's sending emails, and I see them, we've seen them on the website, we see the new ones coming in. We're actually very humbled by the response we've received. But having said that, we're not done. If we're selected tonight, we've still got work ahead. Parking issues that Councilmember Gardner discussed earlier and that Mr. Petros, Councilman Petros, alluded to as well. Mr. Petros is very experienced in parking. The last thing we want to do is to develop a hotel that's short on parking, to put in $43 or $44 million of an investment and to come up short. I can say that our 80 employees will not all be there at the same time. We'll probably, at the most, 30 to 35 employees. But we will do a complete parking study as mandated by staff, as is typical of every hotel that we've ever developed. So we just hope that we're able to get to that point. And so with that, I would just ask that the Council support staff's recommendation and to move forward with our proposal, the Lido House Hotel. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Olson. Mr. Shopoff, let me invite you to come forward, please.
Mayor Curry, fellow councilmembers, thank you very much. First of all, I'd just like to thank you, your staff, for the opportunity to participate in this process. I believe our project fulfilled the requirements that were set forth for a residential project. I clearly get the overwhelming support for a hotel, and I would certainly concur, if you go with a hotel, I believe you've made the right choice from staff's recommendation. I will say, there are still some reasons to consider this, and should things turn a different way, we remain interested. I think that the apartment project that we proposed would have lower traffic impacts. I think it's been said a couple of times, we believe there's certainly some concerns with parking, and that would change either the design or economics of the project. Certainly Coastal Commission probably will weigh in. We've seen recently that they'll require some mitigation. We're not sure that's in the budget. I think one of the other things that the fiscal analysis really misses is, I'm not convinced that the TOT revenues, which is a big part of this, are 100% accretive to the city because some of this hotel occupancy is going to come from other units within the city of Newport Beach. So I just would say, that probably needs to be looked at a little bit differently. I think the other thing is the residential concept that we produced, on top of the fact that we were providing a 100% equity investment in this, we had a substantially higher ground rent, and that provided much less risk. You weren't counting on TOT taxes that could go up and down and fluctuate with the economy. But with that said, I believe I know where the decision would go tonight if it were me, sitting up there, based on the staff recommendation. I believe that Mr. Olson's done a great job with his team, and should you not be successful in negotiating with their firm, we would love to be back at the table with you guys.
Thank you, Mr. Shopoff. Representative from the Sonnenblick group, please come forward. Do we have anyone here from the Sonnenblick organization? Please come forward. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Curry, council. My name is Chris Pachet with CW Driver. We are the design bill general contractor that was selected on behalf of Sonnenblick and La Berge Resorts. I'd like to thank again, like the other participants, everyone's time and involvement from the council to the staff and obviously the great competition that was, I think, put forward for the city here. We feel obviously that from a technical standpoint, from a feasibility standpoint, that we've provided a five-star resort as an option for the group. And other than that, Bob Sonnenblick apologizes for not being able to participate this evening due to a personal conflict. And again, thank you all, and obviously like to thank the group that appears to be the awarded participant. So thank you.
Thank you for coming down. Well, this is an historic day for our city. It's certainly an historic day for the Lido Peninsula and the Lido Village. And I know all of you are very interested in this project, and I want you to know that we read all of your emails. And I don't think that necessarily everybody in the audience is of the same mind, but I think many of you are. And maybe what would be helpful is if we could sort of get some council comments so you get an indication of where we're going from, so some of you can think about the old political axiom, which is, when you're winning, stop talking. But I will start. I will start, and I will say that I thought we had three outstanding proposals. And I think we had three firms that really went into the community, that talked to the people, who understood what Newport Beach really needs. And I think staff and our consultants did a very good job in evaluating all of those, and I think the recommendation for the Olson Group was the right recommendation. And I believe that we still have some negotiations to go. We have some parking issues to solve. We have Coastal Commission to get through beyond that. But I have every confidence that we can do that. And I have every confidence that this proposal will help revitalize the peninsula. It will be an outstanding resource to the Lido community and one that we'll all be collectively very proud of for having participated in. Councilmember Gardner.
First of all, I want to say three class acts. We deal with industries at times that we're getting anonymous hate mail from each other. They're knifing each other back and forth. To see two candidates who are probably going to be disappointed, but to be so gracious about it, makes me say, yeah, we deal with you at any time on a project because you show so much that we don't see a lot of times in today's world. I agree, three wonderful, in addition to three wonderful companies, three wonderful projects. There were things I would take from all of them, I think. But I would agree with staff that for this particular project, this particular site, that that would be staff's choice, would be my choice.
Thank you. Mr. Petros.
Mayor Curry, I will echo that. I will also say, thank you who are here tonight. That was a very, very nice reception for all three of those people, and it warms my heart to know that you can see the good in all three of them as they make their presentations. So thank you all very much. I have reviewed thoroughly the work. I know the gentlemen who are behind these proposals. I know Mr. Olson as a friend, as a fellow who lives on the little island, and I think that we will be in very good hands as we embark on some negotiations with this project. So I would also be supportive of the staff.
Mr. Hill?
Well, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to echo the comments that are made. I think that there are three proposals that have been made, all of which have positive aspects in them. I think that all three proposals also have some aspects that are not as positive as we might like to have. So I think there is some work to be done. But I think clearly one of them jumped up in really addressing the design guidelines that were worked on for over a year by the Citizens Advisory Panel in putting forth the master plan for Lido Isle. And so I'm very pleased with the staff work that's been done with the consultants that have crunched numbers and re-crunched numbers and re-crunched numbers, and I'll be supporting the staff's decision this evening.
Thank you. Councilmember Tagel?
Well, a couple things. When I thought about this particular property, really thought about it within the context of this area and how we can stop the downward slide and bring things back and bring new lift to that area. So that was really foremost on my mind as to how we can begin to revitalize this area. And then secondly, as I indicated at the last hearing, I would be really looking for what the community has to say. You live there, you're in the area, you're going to see it every day, and so I was really interested in your feedback. So thank you for taking the time out of your busy lives to come here and express your opinion to the council. It means a lot to me. And as I indicated, I would be looking really closely and favorably as to what the community wanted to do with this property.
Selig?
Well, there were three highly imaginative, creative proposals, three great development teams. We're very fortunate to have such a high quality of choices to make here, but at the end of the day, I think the staff made the right call on the recommendation, and I'll be looking forward to working with Mr. Olson on his project.
With that, and reminding you of that political axiom, I'll open it up for public
Good evening, Mayor Curry and councilmembers. I'll be brief. This is more of a public service announcement. For those of you who were unable to attend the study session in April, Mr. Bob Olson has agreed to do a public presentation again tomorrow night at our meeting at 6:00 for Speak Up Newport across the breezeway. It's at the same location in the new community meeting room. So for those of you who would like to come and see the full presentation again, where the concept plans are at now, we invite everybody to come down, and we're very excited about this new plan, and we just want to see this succeed as best as it can. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Schroeder. Any other speakers?
Mayor Curry and members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. In 2006, you asked the voters of Newport Beach to approve a general plan. As you know, in that general plan, the four acres we're talking about tonight are dedicated for use as a public facility. As such, with the City Hall leaving, I looked to you and your predecessors to imagine a creative new public use for that land, but I was disappointed. Changing the land use designation from public to commercial is not a proposal for an imaginative new public use. Nor if we are going to change the use, do I see anything innovative, unexpected, or unusual about these three plans, all of which, if built as proposed, would violate our longstanding commitment to a 35-foot height limitation on the peninsula. I am also concerned that we have gone down, as we have gone down the path, we have not properly weighed the relative consequences of the many alternatives that were available to us. Instead, at each fork in the road, we have been told that we're not really making a decision, we're just exploring a concept, and nothing is cast in concrete. I don't know about dancing partners, but it seems clear to me that we are here tonight very firmly committing ourselves to a very definite, yet unproven project, and apparently for the next 99 years, without a proper understanding of the environmental consequences, something we are required by state law to carefully and conscientiously weigh. And even the economic analysis does not seem to have been done using the fiscal impact model required by the general plan. I'm also concerned that your resolution says you want to provide further guidance to city staff through a two-member negotiating team. Frankly, I don't understand the point of that. For the only way you can legally provide direction to that team, and for them in turn to pass that guidance on to the staff, is at a public meeting. So why not dispense with the committee and simply provide guidance directly to staff? Finally, in the staff's proposed next steps, I see that they expect the seven of you to work out the details of the lease in closed session. I would like to remind the staff that there is nothing in the Brown Act that allows the City Council to do that. The only exemption is one allowing you to instruct your negotiator about the acceptable price and the terms of payment. But I would hope that before committing to this, you, the developer, and the public will all have a very clear idea of what revenue we expect to receive, so I don't even see why that would be necessary in closed session. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and fellow councilmembers, Mr. Kiff, Ms. Brandt. My name is Sharon Bowles. I am president of the West Newport Beach Association Board of Directors. We sent you a letter, and Mayor Curry, you stated everything that we sent in that letter, and we heartily endorse what you've said. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Robert Hawkins, attorney representing community groups here. We submitted a letter in connection with this action. We summarized basically three different points. The first is, staff is seeking that you select a winning responsive bidder. There's no resolution to that effect. There's nothing. If I were Mr. Olson, or whoever ultimately is the succeeding bidder, I would want some document that's document that says, yeah, I'm the guy that you're negotiating with. We already heard Mr. Shopoff suggest, well, if he doesn't work out, come back to us. But from my perspective, what you need is a resolution which makes the appropriate findings. The letter we submitted also indicated that maybe none of these people are responsive bidders, because all of them assume a 99-year lease. Well, state law doesn't allow a 99-year lease unless the council makes certain findings. Well, none of those findings are made. There's no resolution establishing those findings. Finally, the environmental, as other speakers have mentioned, is totally lacking here. I disagree with Mr. Petros. There is a project here. There is clearly a project here. There is a change of land use, there is a general plan amendment, and all of that needs analysis. We've got the excessive height. All of that needs analysis, and it hasn't been done yet. The city did circulate, Ms. Brandt omitted to mention, the city did circulate a mitigated, draft mitigated negative declaration. Now, it was a bizarre document, because this was submitted in Thanksgiving, and it was in italics. Surprising. I'd never seen an environmental document all in italics, but it was. The comment period closed the day after Christmas. Well, we submitted comments on behalf of the clients, and then we participated in hearings. And then, I think it was March 26th, Mr. Mayor said, well, we're continuing this matter indefinitely. Well, now we find that that mitigated negative declaration finds its way back into the environmental findings here. Well, if it's continued indefinitely, how is staff referring to that document? That document doesn't even describe the project that they are proposing, because staff is seeking a correction in the project description so to allow visitors serving uses. In any event, we need a resolution selecting the winning bidder, we need to follow the procedures of state law, and we need to do the environmental analysis. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Hawkins. Let me ask the city attorney, do you have some comments you'd like to make in response to Mr. Hawkins before the next speaker comes forward?
Yes, just briefly to respond to the comments of Mr. Hawkins. Mr. Hawkins first indicates that the city council can only take action via resolution or ordinance, and that's just not the case. In his written correspondence, he referred to the charter section related to resolutions and ordinances. City council routinely takes action by motion, and there's no prohibition from you basically designating who you want to negotiate via motion and then establishing via resolution who's going to be in the process of negotiating. In regards to SEQA, basically what SEQA requires, it requires full environmental review before you approve a project. And what you're doing here tonight isn't, you're not approving a project, but as you indicated, you're basically selecting who you're going to dance with, you're going into negotiations, you're not setting forth what the terms are, and you're not actually approving a project this evening, you're just moving the ball down the road to start the process of looking at a project. So, there's no violation of SEQA. And in regards to the term of the contract, you know, there are various provisions about how long the term of the contract can be. That's something that'll be open to negotiation, and the state law does provide for a 99-year lease. There's a couple of different ways to get there, so I don't see any issues there as well.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening. I'm usually here under different pretenses, but tonight, I just want to say thank you. I've been involved with this since the inception, when we were going to pave the old city hall site and put in a parking lot. I can't believe what I'm hearing tonight. I'm so excited. So, I want to thank Dave, I want to thank all of you for your time, and Kim Brandt for the effort that you put forth with this. I think all of us are extremely grateful.
Hi, Mr. Mayor and city council members. I'm Craig Smith, 14-year resident on the peninsula. A decade ago, my company designed the St. Regis Monarch Beach Resort, and based on that experience and looking in detail at Mr. Olson's project, I think it bears a lot of the same hallmarks, a lot of the quality, a lot of the attractiveness that will benefit Newport Beach, as well as the economic benefits. So, I just want to voice my strong support for the project. It's on a little smaller scale than Monarch Beach, but certainly will be a credit to Newport. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers? All right, seeing none, I will bring it back to the council. Let me indicate my intention, if approved, to appoint Mr. Selich and Mayor Pro Tim Hill as the ad hoc negotiating committee. So, that should be, I think, incorporated into the motion. And is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I would so move the recommended action, recommended staff recommendation of the appointment of R.D. Olson as the proposer to negotiate with and the adoption of the resolution forming the ad hoc negotiating committee.
Okay, is there a second?
Mayor Currie, I'll second that with the clarification of the actions that I had asked for with the negotiating committee to focus on parking.
Absolutely. Okay, seeing no further discussion. Here it is, folks.
With Councilmember Hen recusing himself, the motion carries unanimously 6-0.
Well, if you all would just be real quiet, we have an adjournment in memory tonight. First of all, I need to ask, are there any motions for reconsideration?
It's a motion to reconsider the vote on any action taken by the city council, either this meeting or the previous meeting, maybe made only by one of the council members who voted for the prevailing side.
All right, seeing none, tonight we adjourn in memory of the 19 firefighters who lost their lives battling a fierce wildfire in Yarnell, Arizona on June 30th. The men were members of the Granite Mountain Hotshots, an elite unit of the Prescott Fire Department, specially trained in wildland firefighting. Those of us who live in California, even here in Orange County, have seen the devastation caused by wildfires and the extremely dangerous condition that those in the fire service face as they work to save lives and property. Some of our own staff have faced and will face dangers similar to these, finding themselves up against the challenging wildfires very close to our own community. Yet sadly, it is in these moments of profound loss that we understand the dangers and truly appreciate their heroic efforts. So, we use this time to honor our own staff as they risk their lives for us and they travel to wildfires with our prayers and blessings, even as we honor the heroes of Granite Mountain. There are 19 men, two of whom have ties to our own community. Grant McKee once lived in Costa Mesa and attended Newport Mesa schools, including Newport Harbor High until 11th grade, when he transferred, and Robert Caldwell, who is Grant's cousin. On behalf of the council, I extend deepest sympathies to their families, and we adjourn.